All right, the time is now seven o'clock and we'll call this meeting into order. Has this meeting been posted?
Yes, it has.
A roll call will show that four board members are here. Kristin Settle is excused on a work trip and both student board members are here. And we'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we'll begin this meeting with Panther Pride.
In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, we have both Panther Pride events and commendation for teachers and future teachers. So I'll begin by calling up Dylan Hagdorn, Daisy Liza, Liv Vitrono, and Eva Marquez. So these four seniors, oh, Eva's not here. Okay, Eva's not here tonight, but these three seniors and Eva are planning to become educators. They've been participating in Educators Rising, which this year has been led by Julie Grotaforst. And they will, oh, there's Eva, come on up. They will be signing a pledge to prosper. And the pledge to prosper is a commitment from me and the Greendale Schools to interview them for an open position, which they may apply once they complete their teaching certification and credentials. And if they were to return, that they would have a guaranteed interview with us. So I'm gonna let them sign. All right, I'm gonna invite Julie to say a few words about the work that's happened this year.
I'm actually going to start by recognizing our seniors and what their next steps will be. So we have Dylan, who will be attending University of Wisconsin O'Clare, majoring in Biology Education and Psychology. And up on the screen, he shared that his favorite part of Educators Rising was learning more about being an educator this year. Our next aspiring educator is Daisy Liza, and Daisy will be attending UW O'Clare also, majoring in Social Studies Education with a minor in Political Science and Government. And she enjoyed hearing from Ms. Henze about her transition into, from an educator into administration this year as a guest speaker. We have Eva Marquez, who will be attending UW Madison and the School of Education, majoring in Educational Policies with a minor in Physics. And she enjoyed the Stevens Point Leadership Summit that Dylan and Eva attended in August. And our final senior is Liv Vitrono. Liv will be attending the College of Charleston, majoring in Elementary Education. And her favorite part was listening to the teachers come in and tell about their career paths and their journey into education. So congratulations to our seniors, and we look forward to your future careers in education. Tonight you have the pledge to prosper, and then you also have graduation cords identifying you as a member of Educators Rising.
Thank you.
All right, thank you seniors. Take your stuff with you. And then next, I would like to invite Ella and Leah to the podium to share with us just a little bit about Educators Rising and some of the events that we did this year as a chapter. You guys can start by introducing yourselves, and then I'll flip through the slides for you.
Okay, hi, I'm Ella Potkay.
I'm Leah Roberts.
Okay, so our service project we did this year was the book drive with the Nextdoor Foundation. So we had students donate books to donate to the Nextdoor Foundation. So we filled over 10 containers of books and we collected a total number of 1,607 books. Okay, so we had some guest speakers come in. This was the college panel meeting, and future educators came in that were previous Ed Rising members. And they just talked about their experience in Educators Rising and how it made them want to be an educator and what it's like in college becoming an educator. Okay, and then also the Muskego Future Teacher Summit. So this is when we went to Muskego High School, and we talked with other students that want to be educators and talked with educators at Muskego High School. And also broke off into leadership groups and learned like tactics about becoming an educator and how to deal with like connecting with students and stuff like that.
We also went to the UWM Future Educator Summit, where we went to UW Milwaukee and learned more about becoming an educator and also breakout sessions. And then the state conference at UW Stevens Point, we attended and three of us competed. There were also breakout sessions at that.
And that's actually a nice transition to the next step. Thank you, ladies, thanks for your sharing of our experiences. And next, we would like to recognize two of our students that competed at the state conference and then qualified to compete at Nationals, which will be held in Orlando.
So Greendale Educators Rising traveled to the state conference at UW Stevens Point on March 7th. In their first time competing at the state level, Madeline Madsen and Leah Roberts were national qualifiers in the area of children's literature. Maddie and Leah wrote and illustrated a children's book and presented it to a panel of judges, earning a top score in the state of Wisconsin. They qualified to compete at Nationals and will be traveling to Orlando, Florida in June for the national competition. Both Maddie and Leah have been selected to serve as delegates for the state of Wisconsin while at Nationals, and will have the opportunity to provide feedback and vote on future actions of the organization. Congratulations to these future teachers, and we have a certificate of common base.
You wanna share your book? Come on over.
No, you don't have to read it. Just tell us a little bit about what it was and why you wrote about that.
It's called Go Away Ducky. It's called Go Away Ducky, and it's about a girl who learns to like forgive her friends. Yeah.
And so at the state competition, they read and presented their book and to a panel of judges and then received scores and feedback on the book that they presented.
All right, and our final commendation for the evening is Mr. John Kazicki, who was selected as the NCWIT Aspirations in Computing Educator Award. So I'm gonna invite Mr. Kazicki. And is Mr. Lotus joining you, or is he just gonna watch the audience? Okay. Come on up and tell us a little bit about the program and the award.
So the National Women's in Technology Group, they are looking towards just improving representation in technology fields. And part of this award comes from just expanding exposure and accessibility to those types of courses. So I don't, in like my third year here at Greendale, kind of realized we didn't have any computer science class at the high school, and took initiative to get that going. And we've increased our representation from 5% of our young ladies to 15%. So we're halfway to our goal of matching the national average of 31%. So we got some way to go. And I think our next steps are just to get down to elementary school and try to get those motivations started early and exposure so that they realize that they could take that path from a younger age.
Congratulations, Sean, that is quite a recognition. I appreciate, I appreciate John Kazicki and the work that he did to get us launched in terms of computer science. He rallied a group, and he, Zach Geiger, and Emily Walsh at the middle school came to me and said, "We need this." And the three of them worked together to get licensed and start a program. So I truly appreciate them and really making impact. Thank you.
You're okay, Rob? I just wanted to say to the Educators Rising students that you have picked the most wonderful profession to consider. I, in my 35th year as a teacher, I'm a graduate at Greendale, and we did not have this program back in the day when we graduated. But I really encourage you to take up your opportunities to come back to Greendale and give back to this community. But I just wanna thank you all for continuing because we really need good people going into the field of education. So I just wanna wish all of you the best.
All right, moving on to communications.
I only have two communications this week. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and in Greendale Schools, we believe all staff have a role to play in teaching and learning, so we celebrate all employees for Staff Appreciation Week. District Office Administrators will be delivering treats to staff this week, courtesy of the Board of Education. And thank you to Cindy Kazmarsik and her team for preparing the treats. Each building is also planning additional acts of gratitude for their staff. And this Saturday, May 10th, Tyson McCravens, a Boy Scout, will be leading an Eagle Scout project for cleaning the Canterbury Woods. It will be running from 8:00 AM till noon. And anyone who is interested in volunteering, he would certainly love the help in his project to clean Canterbury Woods. And there'll be some additional new signage and potentially a little library that will be going up at the edge of Dixon Forest in Canterbury Woods.
All right, thank you for that. Moving on to student updates.
Sure, so first off, the GHS Student Council Wellness Committee held a blood drive on Wednesday, April 30th, just this past week. And then sources have shown to begun their hope drive, in which students can donate money, clothes, diapers, and other utilities from now until Friday, which is gonna be one of our final fundraisers of the year.
And for my updates, AP tests have started, starting today and going through the next two weeks. Students will be taking exams in the IMC and Ballet Room in order to have an opportunity to gain college credit in high school. Robotics has their end of season banquet on Thursday, May 8th, and DECA has their end of year banquet on May 23rd. Finally, a student equity team has promotions to spread awareness for Asian American Specific Islander Month. Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to comments from visitors. All right, I'm not seeing any. So we will move on to approving the meeting minutes from last meeting, April 28th.
I move approval of the meeting minutes from April 28th as outlined in Agenda Item 1.1.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any comments or concerns before we do a roll call? No? All right, looking for a roll call?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
I'm yes. Motion passes. Moving on to new business, we need to approve personnel.
I move the approval of the teacher resignation and teacher appointments as presented in Agenda Item 3.1A and B.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. If there's no comments or questions, we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes. Motion passes. Moving on, approving the 2025-2026 lunch prices.
This is a report that you saw at the last board meeting, and we brought back the recommendation to increase lunch prices between 20 and 25 cents depending on the school level.
That included increasing breakfast prices by 25 cents. We did review all of the à la carte items, so DPI has a tool for calculating that. And we allocated additional increases for next year to help with closing the deficit. So you'll see in the background items that had an impact on that deficit number of close to $10,000 over the course of the year. And then Cindy Kazmarsik and I will need to continue to work to close that deficit even further so that we can get back on a path that's sustainable for the long term. But for next year, we do have fund balance reserves that we can use as we get ourselves reset to a budget that's balanced.
All right, thank you, Jonathan.
So the shortfall of around 30,000, that includes the increases from the à la carte?
That's after, yes. Yep, it would be higher without that.
Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the lunch prices as outlined in Agenda Item, for the 2025-26 lunch prices as outlined in Agenda 3.2.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
Yes.
Kathy had a question.
Sorry, real quick, I just wanna thank Jonathan and Cindy, she's not here, but thank you for your hard work in this area. This is always something that we gotta focus on, and we've done really well over the years, not increasing prices. But obviously, we have to make sure we're paying our bills too. So I just wanna thank you for the work and all the presentation that you did last week.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion passes. Finally, we are moving on to approving the CISA One Agreement.
The CISA One Agreement is an annual agreement. This is why there hasn't been a report. It's annual contract. CISA stands for Cooperative Educational Service Agency, and there are 12 CISs in the state of Wisconsin. As a member district, we pay a membership fee of $1,800, and then there are additional services that we access as an organization. Two items on there are direct student services. So Project Success Parkway and Educational Audiology just are services provided directly to students through CISA because it would be cost prohibitive for us to hire our own person. So I recommend that you approve the CISA One Agreement for the 25-26 school year.
Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the CISA One Agreement as outlined in Agenda Item 3.3.
A second.
I heard if no one has any questions, we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion passes. Moving on to information, the Renaissance Contract Renewal?
So this is a new item, and it is being brought forward in alignment with the purchasing policy because the total contract amount will be over $100,000, just barely, but over $100,000. So this is being brought forward. We have subscribed to both services in the past couple of years, the past two years, three years. And as they've become, as we've implemented them and are using them consistently, it would be cost effective for us to sign a multi-year contract. We did not do that in the first or second year because we were still figuring it out. So I'm gonna let Maggie share a little bit more about what these tools are used for and why we continue to include them in our purchases annually.
So currently, we're using FastBridge K4 through 10th grade as our universal screener to see how our students are doing and making sure that no students are falling through the cracks in reading and math. And that is really important. And then the second item is our EduClimber, which is our visualization, data visualization, which I think we've, when we adopted it, I did come to the board and we did a presentation around how we're able to look at data, share data with PLCs for grade levels, share data walls for classes, also be able to progress, monitor students' progress on interventions. And currently, we have full implementation at all five schools, so it'd be really important for us to have this renewal. And when, we were one of the first adopters of EduClimber, it was, and the prices have keep going up, so we really wanna make sure that we're getting that three-year price because it will be, as we're seeing, there's 5% to 10% increases every year. So us being able to get that three-year locked in is important and why this is coming across the board table.
So we are not asking for approval tonight. This will be brought back for approval at the May 19th meeting, which Maggie will be the administrator representing me because I will not be here. So this will be brought back at the next meeting. And any questions that the board has, we'll be happy to provide some feedback or get information for you before that vote is taken.
Just one question, Maggie. With this, will this include if there are any updates to the resources and so forth? I'm assuming that because we'll be that year, we'll be, you know?
Yeah, though, all the, all the updates are included. Anything that they add, for instance, they are adding things to help us with Act 20, the reading bill, and all that's included. It's just to make sure that we are locked in for our price.
And are they a Wisconsin-based company?
Um, no, they're through Renaissance, which is a national company. They, it was, EduClimber started with a Wisconsin-based company, and that was bought by Renaissance.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
EduClimber is the tool that we are using as our dashboard to monitor our progress on District Priority 1, you have two goals in that space, and District Priority 2. So that's the tool that's helping us to visualize the dashboard so that we can monitor throughout the year.
So you're using this for like professional development and things like that?
Like there are teachers that are using it daily, and then there are teachers that are, like teacher groups that use it weekly, and then there's more of that leadership model that people are using it at professional development. So it's used at every different level. Like you can just see your class's data, or you can see your whole grades, or you can see a whole school's. So it really helps us be able to pinpoint where we need to move instructionally or where we need to move for that specific student. And Brian, you look like you had a question too?
Yeah, I was looking at the quote that they gave for the contracting, and I know that we talked about the declining total enrollment, and I saw those 2,550 for the software licenses. Is that something that's gonna change, or is that just the rate, and that's a set minimum that we have for the licenses? Or is that something that is, like say we only have 2,400 that we need?
So it was at 2,700, so we already tried to right-size it, and Jonathan and I looked at enrollment numbers, because it also includes time for learning as well, a part of this. So that's why it's a little bit higher.
And then would this carry over with the Global Academy, or would that be separate if they were to do something?
It depends on enrollment numbers. If we need to increase, that's something that we can do and talk to the, our representative from EduClimber and see what that would look like, because that would make sense to do that.
The Greendale Global Academy for the 25-26 school year will be a program of Greendale Schools that will evolve into an independent charter. The board has met, and so if there are things that are required of Greendale students, which are 6th through 10th graders, would be included, they would be included, but it's a small count. I'm expecting less than 15.
Oh, quick question. It says here that the 3% increase for years one and two, if we didn't do it, it's a 6% increase. If, for year four, if we were to renew the contract, like year four, five, six, would that be the 3% increase? Would they give us that, or would it jump 6% after this contract?
Jonathan and I work really hard to negotiate all those things. It depends on the vendor.
It's a good question. They're not offering that, but we can go back to the vendor and try and twist a little bit further to see if they'll be willing to lock further out. This is all, this is all they were willing to offer. There was a separate quote that they offered that required cash upfront, which is something from cash flow purposes. It wasn't beneficial to us. There wasn't enough savings in doing that. So this allows us to pay in a cash basis annually for the subscription, but they, at this point, they've only offered a three-year lock. But we'll go back, we'll go back to them with that question and see if they'll go further for the next meeting. There's sometimes a balancing act of like, what's the right number of years in case something does change if we're contractually locked, because then we don't have options. So that's a balancing act, but if we wanna be able to see that as a, an option, maybe that can be done without, without us committing to year four and five to negotiate that on the contract. We can try.
That's a great question. And to Jonathan's point, there are, within the next three years, there might be a different system that has different capabilities that we'd wanna look into, so we don't wanna like lock in six years or do something like that.
Yeah, and I wouldn't say, you know, lock in another three years after that, but kinda, you know, at the good guy price, like we're coming back.
Yeah, you can come and join the negotiations. I'm just kidding.
I can try.
We got, we got it.
I'll let, I'll let the professionals handle it.
Yeah, thank you.
Kathy has a question.
One last thing, just in terms of, since there's a lot of student data that's in this system, do they make guarantees about student safety, security, and so forth?
Yeah, that's a great question. That is something that regardless of what system we adopt, we work with Ryan Jonas around privacy and data security, that there are several applications that we no longer use because of that. So when we were in the wild west of COVID and we were trying all these different apps and just trying to make it work, we cleared out a lot of those apps because they didn't have the security and data privacy that we needed. And now we are really, before we bring anything to this table, it has been fully vetted by the tech team and then also the security and privacy through Ryan Jonas. He does a really nice job with that.
Yeah, there's two aspects to it. A signature for, a confidentiality signature that they'll comply with SIPPA, and then check on who they share their data with and who has access. And, or not who had, who, some of the security loopholes within the system so that there's not a cyber incident where they can hack in through that system. One of the systems where that is an issue is a very popular teacher system that they have asked repeatedly to bring back. And we say, sorry, they will not comply with our student privacy and data protection, so we can't do that, but I think you can ask them.
I've made some people very mad. I've made some people very mad.
Yeah, you've been asked a couple of times about that. And I've actually been asked by students about one.
But we have to follow our procedures and policies.
For the protection of our data.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you guys. Moving on to legislative update, I believe Kathy.
Yes, I didn't realize, I had to ask him today, I said, "I think I'm in charge of that now." So there's not too much, Tasha covered pretty much everything last week. Just going to mention, did you touch on this about the Senate Committee's education bills? I think you did touch on those, right? The five bills impacting public education, so I don't think we need to touch on that. And then Governor Evers did join the multi-state lawsuit seeking to prevent USDE from withholding federal funds based off of the latest Title VI compliance request. And again, I think, did you touch, yeah, so you touched on that, so we're good, we're good.
All right, thank you. Moving on to board committee updates.
Greendale Global Academy Board met last week, they elected officers. Laura Misko is the president, Aaron Dummett is the vice president, and Joe Creppito is the clerk treasurer of the Greendale Global Academy Board. The board has established mission and vision that they'll be voting on at the next meeting, they're working on their beliefs, and there is a visit scheduled to Elkhorn for their Options Academy, which is a virtual charter that is run out of their district that has some in-person supports as well, so we're looking to learn more about that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will move on to board professional development.
Well, on Friday, we had a, we had a workshop with Dr. Lee Pritzl where we addressed communication with the community and working with our community members. This week, Friday, three board members are you going to, Tasha? To the School Board Association of Excellence Summit?
Um, no.
No, okay, so two board members and I are going to the summit, and Mr. Mitchell will be presenting one of the breakout sessions around school finance, so that will be an upcoming professional development experience.
Where's that being held?
Milwaukee Marriott West.
Who's going?
Christine Hargo. All right, if no one has anything else to share, we will move on to the board calendar.
So this week, as I mentioned, the School Board Association of Excellence is holding their School Board Summit, and two of our board members will be there. On Saturday, there may be a quorum of the board present to volunteer as part of the Eagle Scout project to clean Canterbury Woods and Dixon Forest, there may not be, but no board business will be discussed. And there are a number of concerts coming up, the spring concerts are next week. Highland View, Canterbury, and College Park have spring concerts on the 13th, 14th, and 15th. And the Highland View PTO meeting is Monday, the 12th. Oh.
There's the ART Gallery Night at the middle school on the 14th from 5:00 to 6:30.
Thank you, I see that on here too, but I also have the Board Finance Committee, so that's why. And then the Outdoor Education will be Monday and Tuesday, the 12th and 13th, so 7th grade last year returned to Outdoor Education, so they are back, and the 7th graders will again travel this year. The majority of students, I believe over 80%, just under 90% are traveling for the experience, and...
Is that in Lake Geneva still?
It is in Lake Geneva, and then there is a Board Finance Committee on the 14th in addition to our Gallery Night. And that should be it.
All right, thank you. Moving on to additional comments from visitors, bless you. No one? All right, then we will adjourn and meet back at 7:00 PM on May 19th.